... my integrity on this board, which I've worked very hard to keep. And I do not appreciate being told that when I am here worrying about, if I'm biased, it is because my kids are in this district, Richard Olson. All right? And I do not appreciate the implication that this is about my wife's position. That is beyond the pale.
Mr. Chairman.
And I respect who you're coming from, but I would say that you have been more than transparent about your commitment to the district. And I don't think you apologize to anybody but to Jason.
Thank you, Jim. We move on to the item which is at hand, which is the levy amount.
And again, just to reemphasize, going through all the numbers and all the variables that are out there, you can spend the numbers any way that you want, but the bottom line is our expenditures have exceeded our revenues. And the projections you've seen in the last four months that Colleen has shown, very clearly shows you that you will be deficit spending, well, actually, you'll be deficit spending next year if you don't resolve the issue. So you do have responsibility as a board to figure out how to resolve the issue. And my suggestion to the board, and it's gone through the Finance Committee and many other folks, is to look at the $600 per student levy. We believe that that has the least amount of tax impact. It can address some specific needs that our focus group has talked about. Not a lot, we're not going to change the world, but at least it addresses some needs that we've talked about within our community I think would be positive.
James, have one more question, Todd. If we go with the $600 per pupil unit, and we'll determine what term that is in a moment if we go there, I'm not going to ask you for guarantee, there's no guarantees in this world for most people. What's the certainty we will not be coming back to the taxpayers in two or three years asking for additional dollars?
Okay, that's a very good question. And there's a couple of options that you have in here. First of all, let's just use the scenario for the first levy that's out there right now, the 385, because that's going to expire in a couple of years. And if you choose not to revoke and replace, and you choose that levy to expire, then I would say in three years, we would have to go back to the taxpayers and at minimum renew that 385 levy.
How many years on that 385?
There's two more, there's three more years left.
It was five years.
Yep.
Five years and...
You're in your second year.
When do we first get the money for that renewal?
This is the first year you're getting that money.
So we got four...
Four more years. You'd have to go to the taxpayers in three years and vote. Yep. Okay, so that would be one scenario that I would say.
That's a renewal.
That's a renewal, yep. If you choose to revoke and replace and just combine both the levies and the state does not give us any money, we project, remember, zero percent increase also. And if the state does not give any increases, as James said, you look at your deficit dollar amount after three years with a nine and a half percent fund balance. That would probably get you out to year four, and then if the scenarios work itself out, you probably will have to go back to the voters in four years with this minimum levy. So those are my concerns.
Thanks. I know that's, you know, taking futuristic.
Yep.
Appreciate that, Todd. Thank you.
You bet.
Todd, wasn't the, our column came up with a lot of different levy amounts?
Mm-hmm.
And they came with a higher one of 924 or 42?
Yeah, we did, we actually went back to the programs we looked at, and we divided the amount to try to figure out what the true cost would be. It actually went down a little bit compared to what we've talked before. So if you take the 385 plus 600, it'd be, help me out, 985, right? So instead of the 990, it'd be 985.
So I know you stated the state average is 900, and this is really close to the state average. I was just wondering if you just said, okay, we want the state average, maybe a little bit more, but what's the basis for that?
That if you...
That's the thing, is that, okay, at least we'll get up to state average, but maybe instead of a 600, it may be, oh, 400 or 300, or 800 or 900.
You bet. And you could do that, too, and I am not opposed to that, but that just gets you status quo and it preserves the cuts. So you could go to 900, what is, and that's an additional 515, right? So you could add 515 to the levy instead of going to the full 600. But then you wouldn't get the options of adding some of those programs.
I have a question.
Please, yeah.
I'm not really sure who to direct it to, you or Todd, but you were saying to go out for a new one or rescind and go out for the total?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't we not have to vote on that?
Yes.
That would be the term piece, yep. That would be the discussion for the term, yep.
I'd like to make a comment, please. One of the things that I am most pleased about the last year of my work on the board was the board's work to come up with a, what I think is a more complete definition of student achievement. We had been emphasizing tests and have broadened that out. I think we have a lot of work remaining in seeing how that's going to be implemented within programs. I know that some of the programs we've had were perhaps aimed at test results. And whether that's still necessary or not, I think is a matter for further discussion. But it's the programming that delivers what I believe you described, or Jerry, I'm sorry, what Jason and Jerry described as a comprehensive, excellent education for the students of Fairville. At least coming close to what you said. All right. To me, that is priority number one. And to define that program of excellence and comprehensiveness requires us to take a look at all of what we're doing. And I think the Curriculum Committee has started to do that, and is hopeful of doing more of that in the coming year. But that excellent program is going to cost. There is a cost involved, there's no way around it. So given the state of educational funding, given the fact that the state funding has been relatively flat, there doesn't seem to be any federal funding that's increasing, and we're forced to look at local funding, is why I'm supporting the idea of a levy. I'm not unaware or unappreciative of the difficulties that some of our taxpayers may encounter. But I believe my first duty is to ensure that whatever money is spent on education is spent for that excellent and comprehensive program, that we are getting that kind of program for the money that we spend. And from what I've been hearing and actions that we have taken over this last year and a half of my being an on-board, and that I observed prior to that, I believe we're making a very strong attempt to do that. It's not an easy task, but we're trying. So having said all that, I guess, I remain in favor of the idea of a levy, realizing we've already passed that, but looking at the amount is determining the amount that we need to create and sustain that excellent program. And whatever amount we receive from the taxpayers, whether it's current funding, get an additional levy or whatever, the task will remain to ensure that we create and sustain that programming. And I had a lot of comments at the last meeting about this 3%, 2%. I believe that we have to make the best decisions possible at the time that the circumstances arise. And if we can sustain that programming and are unable to offer raises, well, then that's probably the situation we're going to have to deal with. If we feel we have to, you know, meet the market in terms of employment, well, then that's a situation we'll have to deal with. My priority is to create, sustain that excellent and comprehensive program. And anything that gets in the way of that, I'm opposed to, whether it be raises or whatever. And that'll be my position as we go forward. My position today is that we need to raise some money to cover the expenses of that program. And I would like to see ongoing examination and definition of what that comprehensive and excellent program is. I appreciate what Todd was saying about the FTEs. There are a couple of FTEs that I could imagine that would contribute to what I believe is an excellent and comprehensive program. But that's an ongoing discussion, and it's a moot point unless we raise funding. I don't see, I see, anything that I could put my finger on that is fat. I believe the fat disappeared years ago. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Todd.
Jason, I'd like to respond to that, that the excellent program, we passed the 385 in 2005, renewed it in 2010. Then we came out the rating system from the state, and it looks like our middle school isn't doing too well at 13%. Whatever that means, that we'll get an explanation from Todd when he fully understands it, but I have a feeling that 13% or whatever that means is probably not good.
Well, I would argue...
And then if this 600 or 900 or whatever, will that guarantee that the middle school will at least maybe be passing, or I don't know, whatever those scores might be indicate of, right now it's 13, I'm taking that as really bad and way below the three elementaries, the ALC and the high school.
It depends on how you want to rate your school. If you rate your school strictly on the standardized test and you base it on our population, then in my, and Tom, I hope you agree with me, I think it's unfair comparison. And...
I do agree.
Okay. I would just assume, try to figure out a way that the school board can evaluate our middle school, rather than the state coming in and evaluating our middle school. And get your recommendation from the staff, the community, and from the board of how well our middle school is doing. I have seen some, and I've been in the classrooms, and I have talked to the staff. Tom's been in there before, many years. I don't think that our middle school went from a very good program, and now it's, I don't even know what that 13% is. Quite honestly, I haven't seen it anywhere. But I'll look at it. I think it's that MMR rating or whatever that whole piece is. But I don't think that our staff and our teachers and our will to make kids successful in those programs has gone away. I think that the teachers are working harder. I think that we have done some great things with our academic programs, with the AVID, with the Reader's Workshop, and implementing a lot of these database-driven decision-making programs, and working with Minnesota State University of Mankato to do the latest and greatest things within education. We just have a very, and I don't want to use excuses, and I told our teachers not to use excuses, and I don't want to either, but the reality is, we have a population that we're getting right now that not only doesn't speak English, but they also haven't had any academics for a number of years. So when you put somebody in front of the test and you have somebody take that test, to me, you're already, I mean, if you get a zero and somebody else gets 100, your average is already 50%. So, you know, it's really hard. But if you're using those scores strictly to grade our middle school, then yeah, our middle school is terrible.
Mr. Chairman.
But I would argue that our middle school is quite good.
I just want to figure that number, Tom talked about, comprehensive education. My parents stand before us tonight, gave a statement that, let's take a look at what the community of Fairville wants for its educational program, and not comparing ourselves with all our neighbors. You know, find what Northfield does, find what Ohio does, but what do we want in Fairville Public Schools, this week's 656, when those kids are walking across the stage and they're given a high school diploma? What are we guaranteeing them, that they have the skill to make some good decisions about their future, whether it be post-secondary, whether it be a technical college, whether it be a training, some other kind of situation? Let's take a look at what Fairville wants for its students, and then let's go for that. And it is comprehensive, Todd.
We have a question in front of us at this moment, which is to choose an amount for the levy. And we have had a great deal of important discussion on the levy in general, and I don't want to short-circuit that, but I would also like us to make sure that we address that specific question. I'm wondering if there's anyone on the board at this time who would like to start with a number that we would like to consider as a board?
I'll make a motion for $600 with the strong desire to support six new positions, but with the realization that as times and revenue changes, that may or may not be possible, i.e., there are no guarantees with the passage of this levy.
Thank you, Jim. So we have a motion for a $600 levy to be brought to the community in November? Is there a second?
My motion does include the i.e. I mean, that wasn't just a plan.
With the i.e., Kathy is the i in the notes? It's important.
I like that motion, I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second in front of us. Discussion on the motion.
There have been some specific references to what those 6.0 FTEs might be. Are you, is it implied or contained in this motion that the specifics of those 6.0 FTEs be defined as been discussed, or is that something that we would like to use to expand and restore and support curricular programs? If it's, I'm not in favor of specifying, you know, three kindergarten teachers at this time. I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying it's too early to know, for me. But I can certainly understand, based on presentations by Mr. Turrell and others, you know, how we could add that point to our teacher, perhaps bringing back some more industrial technology and the music. I want those specifics to be defined. I think they ought to be defined for our voters prior to the levy to the greatest degree possible, but I'm not comfortable with endorsing 6.0 with the specificity that was mentioned earlier. So is this 6.0 in general or 6.6?
My motion did not specify.
My understanding of the motion was that I did not specify those.
All right. I'm comfortable.
With the hope that it could support six new positions. There might be five positions.
It might be, it might be four, it might be three, it might be, I don't know, but...
Within understanding of the ambiguity of the...
That's, we'll have to solve those issues as they arrive.
Okay. So that is, as the motion is put forward right now, there are not guarantees on those positions?
Right.
Other questions or comments on this particular...
I'll make one final thing. I believe the 600 just pretty pulled right out of my hat.
All right. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, why don't we do a roll call?
Are you sure we're done with discussion?
Uh, maybe not. Sorry. We cut it off. Sorry, Howard, I did not mean to cut you off, but if you had another comment, please, go ahead.
You know, since I've been on the school board, I know a whole lot more about school finances than I did a couple of years ago. I understand the importance of a fund balance, and I'm concerned that even at $600 after three years, we could be dropping back down and cutting into our fund balance and getting it below our policy of nine and a half percent at minimum. I think 3% is wishing and hoping. I think that's a kind of a best-case scenario, that our expenses won't go up by more than 3%. And I think that probably happened some at the last levy. We didn't anticipate enough what increases in expenses we were going to have, what increases in needs we were going to have for different positions. And now we're looking at do we increase costs, for example, insurance and whatnot. So I think, I want to go on record, or at least make my concern known, that I think $600 is a bare minimum. And for us to be responsible with our fund balance and with providing what I think is good for this community, I wouldn't go for any less than that. I would have liked to have seen even more, because I think we could have improved some things. But I understand Mr. Olson's position with the taxpayers who are in need times right now. However, I do think this is, I'll support it at 600, but I do have a concern that it's not enough.
Can I just make one comment, too?
Please, yeah.
That you will be also voting later on, just to keep this in mind, on D, whether or not you want to put an inflationary factor per year on the referendum. And what that means is that the $600 would go up according to whatever the CPI is per year, if you wanted to include that in the referendum. So that could also generate, and you can put that on the ballot, too.
All right. Any further comments? Give it some time, Mr. Todd.
Mr. Jason, Mr. Bodie said, how much is enough? You know, since you've asked me a question, how much is, you know, is it 985? What's the maximum?
Do you want to run the school district without any levy and just run the school district on what we get from the state? That would be cutting back to bare minimum, and we'd have large class sizes, we wouldn't have vocational education, we wouldn't have a good music program, we wouldn't have, be able to deal as well with challenges we have with people who don't speak English. And so I think it's unrealistic completely to think we're going to run our district without having a levy and running it only on the money we get from the state and federal. So we have to, you know, our community has to step up to the plate if we're going to have an educational system that's beyond the bare minimum.
What's the maximum now?
1,600 is the max.
And I did ask Mr. Bodie, why not quote that, $1,600? Or, you know, subtract a 385? Why not that?
For me, it's a compromise, because I do realize that it does mean an increase in taxes. And so you have to have somewhere where you say, okay, what's realistic? And, you know, what's financially a good decision? And I'm concerned that 600 isn't enough. I think 900 probably would have been better, as far as financial responsibility, going beyond it to 1,200, for example, I think might be a little bit luxurious. But 600 is a minimum.
All right, any further comments on this? We have a motion and a second to bring a levy in the amount of $600 to the community. All right, hearing, no further discussion. I will ask our esteemed clerk to do a roll call, please.
James Wolf?
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jason Inberg?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, and it passes 6 to 1. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Next on the agenda is to discuss term. Todd, maybe you could give us some guidelines as to what's in the realm of possibilities here?
You could choose to revoke and replace, and that simply means that you would revoke the current levy dollar amount, and then add $600 to that current amount, and then you get a new total. And then that total, you could decide to run anywhere between one year and 10 years. So that would be one option that you could do. Or you can look at this $600 levy separate, and then just treat it as a separate entity and choose however length of time you want to run that term.
Do we have to choose the first option now, or can we wait till the 385 is about, ready to blink off, and at that time decide that you want to...
Revoke and replace?
Yeah.
No, we can't, we have to, we can vote at that time in three years. If you choose to just look at the $600 levy, there's some strategy that you have to think about, too. If you want to use, let's just say that you vote to do the $600 levy for 10 years, and then in three years, you come back to the voters and you say, we're going to revoke the 600 and add the 385, you do it at that time. And there's some good strategy to that, too.
Questions or comments or motions from the board? Do we want to handle this separately, the rescind, revoke and replace?
Revoke and replace, yeah.
And then the length? Do we want to handle those separately? Or do we want to, does someone want to make the motion on those together, or are there questions or comments?
Just one other data, piece of data that's out there. Remember that you have your big, I think it was like a 30, over $35 million building levy that will expire in three years, too. So that's something to consider, that your taxes will go down. Actually, I think it's two years, no, it's three years. So by the time the, if you wanted to replace the 385, it'd be a year off that voting thing. But there is going to be a significant decrease in taxes in three years, or two years. Two years. And I think you've seen that data with the bonds, you've seen the different times that those things come up. The timing doesn't work real well now, and it doesn't work real well in three years, if you want to go to the taxpayers without an increase, but you are going to see taxes decrease in two years.
The chair will entertain comments or motions.
Well, I'd like to make a, considering the term now, whether we revoke and replace.
Whether or not we revoke and replace.
Okay, well, I'll make a comment about term. It's my feeling that a term of five years would provide as much future seeing as we're capable of doing, and provide some stability in programming during that time. Of course, it would be incumbent upon the Board of Education, whomever may be serving on that, over that period of time, to make, you know, good decisions, and that's what we're charged to do. So I like the idea of at least five years. I personally like the idea of a revoke and replace, in that that would create a stable funding platform for the foreseeable future and then so on. And again, if my goal is to create and sustain a comprehensive quality system, and unless there is that stability, you know, it's heartrending and it's impossible to, you know, when we're bouncing mostly down over the last number of years. And I think that this levy is an opportunity to provide that kind of stability that I see contributing to excellence and comprehensiveness. So as we're looking at these two questions, I'm in favor of a revoke and replace, and for a period of five years.
So, I have a question.
Please, Jim.
So if you do revoke and replace, you're not only asking the people to approve this levy for X number of years, you're asking them to vote the 385 be extended to be coterminous with this levy term? So there's really a second question there as well. I guess we have to decide this tonight, because we have to submit it to the state, but it would be nice if we could see that by year, you know, when things blink out, because it is confusing as to get the money a year after you approve it and it goes off. So it'd be nice to see by year with that building fund levy and there also capital fund levy, when things like that, you know, what it would be each year, if we just approved this and left it, 385, you know?
And it's...
I think I'd prefer to keep it cleaner and just vote on this at this point in time.
And it's hard to, I know that I said taxes will decrease in two years, so, and then in the third year, the 385 would expire. But even the finance people have a difficult time doing those apples-to-apples comparisons on the tax decrease, because they're based on two different types of taxes. So all I can say is that you're going to save money, the taxpayers will save money in two years if nothing else replaces it.
How will this appear on the ballot?
That is, again, the first piece has already been discussed, the dollar amount. The second piece is if you choose to revoke and replace, the ballot will still say this is going to be a tax increase, but then it would appear as a total dollar amount to revoke and replace. So it would go with the total dollar amount of what the...
The 985?
Yes.
Because they're already paying the 385 in taxes.
Right. Yep, so that's something to consider, too. If you're more comfortable having $600 on the ballot, then that would be...
Yeah, but is that misleading then? Because you've got the 385 already?
Yeah, and the taxpayers, remember...
You're just adding on to this, and, well, it's not just 600, it's actually 385.
It depends on if you extend the years that the taxpayers have already voted on in favor of. You'd have to make sure that that's clear to the taxpayers, too. Because the taxpayers have already voted on a five-year 385 levy. Because the taxpayers have already voted on a five-year, three eighty-five levy.
I am, the, the key word for me when I think about the term here is, is stability. And I think about the position the board felt in a couple of years ago when we went back to the public at three eighty-five. We would not have gone out to increase that at that time. And the district, our, our students and our teachers, all feel this lack of stability when, when those come, when that comes up. And we, we didn't raise that levy for seven years, but midway through that, everyone in the district and the community had to have this question of whether or not we were going to have stable funding for our schools. And to me, stability is key. And this is why I would want to do the revoke and rescind. I think it makes sure that whatever is in place is in place full of for, full term. So that it stays clear, I think, for the community, otherwise I think you end up going back to the community a few years when the three eighty-five comes off and, and you ended up in a cycle, which, you know, I felt like we've been in where we're back asking the community every two years for, for that. And the more stability we can provide, the less likely, there are no guarantees here, but I think the less likely that is to happen. So I'm certainly in favor of the revoke and rescind. And I think I would like to go beyond five years personally. A number more like eight years, I think is appropriate for making sure that our, our community knows what funding we'll be receiving.
I think if you, if you go five years, at the end of five years, you're back at the mercy of the voters again. And the school board could go there and inclusion to bring another levy. And I think that stability is very important, so I agree with you.
I believe in stability, but I think passage is the number one priority. And I think the cleaner it is, the less confusing it is. You're binding future school boards if you go out that far. I'm in favor of five years, not R and R.
And not the R, and you're not in favor of revoke and rescind either?
I'm not.
Revoke and replace.
Replace, huh?
Just because I think it gets confusing to people.
I have to agree with James. All due respect, I, I just have a real concern about complicating that ballot. And there's going to be enough on that ballot already for the taxpayers to sort through that. What does this mean, revoke and replace? What you're really saying is that they passed two years ago with three eighty-five, not for five years, I believe. Now we're saying we're going to revoke that and we're going to extend it out for another six or seven years. And I agree, I think passage is as important. They give off for some stability. I, I'm conflicted with both, but I think I can sort it out as soon as somebody takes a, passes that motion.
So what does that mean at the end of two years? And what are the ramifications of that? I'd like to hear that from the chief of staff.
Well, I think just, you know, long-term strategy too, you're just looking at the six hundred dollars. If you want to just go with the six hundred dollars on the ballot and isolate that, then maybe you want to figure out, okay, if you're going to go back to the taxpayers with the three eighty-five, how long do you want the three eighty-five to go again? Do you want that to match up with your six hundred dollars that you're doing now? You know what I mean? So you've got four years left on this one. So for example, if you choose eight years on your six hundred, then you'd go to the voters in four years probably to do the three eighty-five for four years. And then the six hundred and the three eighty-five would match at the end of the four years. So that, it doesn't have to be eight, but that was just an example that you could look at too. Then it's a lot less misleading to the taxpayers and it's a lot more upfront. It's a lot more transparent.
Howard, if I can just, this is what you're asking, I think there's a possibility that people will see that we are proposing a nine hundred dollar new levy.
So it's always.
And it's only six. And I think people look at that nine hundred dollar factor in a more negative way than they would the six hundred. That's my sense.
But it is nine hundred, nine, nine eighty-five.
It's not, it's six hundred dollars new money, but three eighty-five is already there.
And that expires.
Bill would be based on that nine.
And that information would go out to the public, that the vote would be on the increase in six hundred.
But they're not voting on a nine hundred dollar increase in November.
No, no.
Six hundred dollar increase.
I agree, I, I think the easier, the easier the question, you know, for that, that taxpayer. Because I've gotten confused somewhat, hearing everything, but I, I understand what's going on. But when you actually read it and the way that little box reads, it's going to look like you're doing, you already got the three eighty-five and now you're asking for nine hundred more.
Well, anybody like to make any motion? At this time or further discussion? You talk about your opinions and?
It is a motion that we go with six hundred dollar levy for five-year term. And not the revoke and replace, sorry.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second for no revoke and replace with a five-year term. Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Personally, I would prefer to see an, an eight-year term. I think setting ourselves up for a five-year term puts us in a position that we'll be back asking the voters for new levies every two or three years, I think.
Is there more than one?
Well, at this moment, I'm speaking and it could become an amendment. But I'm speaking towards a five terms, which I'm, at this, a five-year term, which at this moment, I'm not sure that I would support. I would rather see us, uh, and work towards putting those, uh, that, that question at the same time in the future. I could support a revoke and replace for eight years, I think, to get those coinciding. But I think to put ourselves in a position that would almost certainly will be back every two or three years asking again is, uh, is setting the district up for some really difficult times.
And even though we want transparency, I think it also becomes confusing when you have to come back every few years.
Those are the life and times for schools and so on.
So I guess I, I don't usually do so, but I'll offer an amendment to change the term from five years to eight years.
I second.
We have a motion and a second.
Um, Jerry, what do we do?
The strike out, the motion and amendment is to strike out five and insert eight in here. And we do, the debate now is on the amendment, the only, and we'll vote on the amendment first.
Restate the motion, please.
So, so the motion is to amend the motion, the original motion. The original motion was for not to do a revoke and rescind and to do a term of five years. The amendment proposed and seconded is to extend that, change that five years to eight years. Otherwise, they mean the motion the same. So when we vote next on this, we'll be voting not on the term, but on whether or not to accept the, the amendment. Any further comments on, questions or comments on that?
Well, having spoken previously about stability, I think the longer term does take a step along that route. I'm not, you know. I hesitate, as been mentioned, having to confront the voters with the choice of, of levies so frequently. But I can see a possible advantage by having an eight-year term on this six hundred dollar levy and evaluating the state of state contributions and other things at the time that our three eighty-five levy might expire. So it, you know, if the state were to change its pattern and increase its, its level of funding, then allowing the three eighty-five to expire might be an appropriate choice. But we won't know that until the time. And so I guess I'm speaking in favor of the amendment. I like the, I think the stability of eight years is a positive thing for our program.
Further comments on the amendment?
I, I, I'll comment that we're going to burden our taxpayers for eight additional years. Also, no one can predict this, but what if the economy goes south, really south? And what's happening in Europe and everybody else, no one can predict. Then we have this high levy and people lose their jobs, but they still have to pay their taxes. And how do we explain that to the taxpayers, that the economy's going south, they don't have jobs, taxes are going up? That's it.
Other comments on the amendment that's proposed? Hearing none, we'll vote on the amendment. So this is not deciding to approve a term or not, but to amend the motion, the original motion. And whether or not the, the motion in front of us will have five years in it or eight years in it.
Strike five and insert eight.
Okay, so, uh, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
This is yes or no on eight years?
On eight years, right.
James Wolf?
No.
Jerry Robichaud?
Yes.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jason Ingraham?
Yes.
Deb Davis?
No.
Tom Casper?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, and it passes four to three.
Okay, motion carried. So now we have a, uh, a motion in front of us for a no revoke and rescind and an eight-year term for the levy that we bring to the community. Comments on, on this, this motion? Okay, hearing done, should we go ahead and do a roll call vote?
James Wolf?
This is now to make it eight.
Nope, this is the six hundred.
The motion is for eight years without revoke and rescind.
Without revoke and.
For six hundred. No, we did the six hundred.
We did, we did, we did say it's for eight years without revoke and.
Could you restate the motion again, please, sir?
Sure, so the, the motion is for an eight-year term, there will be no revoke and rescind.
Replace, vote revoke and replace, that's right.
How many times have I said that before you corrected me? Allison knows, she's been coming.
We all know what you meant.
No revoke and replace.
Okay, well, I guess I just voted against the eight years two minutes ago, I can't vote for, I could, I mean, I'm not voting against. So the, uh, my vote is no.
Jerry Robichaud?
Yes.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jason Ingraham?
Yes.
Deb Davis?
I am going to do the opposite of James this time and vote yes.
Tom Casper?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, and it passes five through.
So how do you think I feel, I voted against my original motion.
You voted for, before you voted.
All right, the, the last item on the levy is to discuss whether or not we would like an inflation factor applied to the, to the levy amount. All right, Tom, do you want to talk us through that just briefly?
Yeah, just each year, the inflationary factor is calculated based on the CPI and the Consumer Price Index. And then that's applied to the dollar amount, and that's your, that's an automatic increase. Or if it's at a zero, then it's a, a zero increase. So it's based on CPI.
Is that the way the city economy backs has worked as well with levies?
I'm not sure about those, somebody else might be able to answer that.
Now, this is relatively new, you brought up this.
Um, it's actually been in place for about ten years now.
No, 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 discussion within the board, because we've talked about term and amount. And this is relatively new, I, I didn't know of a sudden you're throwing something new at us. Inflation factor.
Yeah, I don't know if it's.
It just is, you know, just how many different things are we going to be adding on to this?
Well, the term, I guess, was relatively new to the board too.
Yes.
So I, I, it depends on you.
This is really new, this is inflation. Now, what if there are deflation?
You can table it and wait till July too.
I believe the topic was brought up at several meetings in the past few months.
I, this is not the first I've heard of it.
You have options, you can make a motion, wait till July too.
Um, comments?
I, I have a question though, just, and I'm going to ask, re-ask what Richard just asked. With deflation though, it stays at the six hundred, right? We don't de-inflate.
Right, it's just an inflationary factor, that's part of it, yep, part of the question too.
Okay, why if there's?
You have to ask the state what they do.
Okay, so it doesn't, doesn't reverse?
No, does CPI index go to negative at all? I don't know. I think.
Deflation?
It can, it hasn't in about fifty years, I don't know if it'll not.
So deflation, we don't reduce it, but inflation, we.
Yeah, it's kind of like mandates, special ed increases, and we really can't do anything about it.
Jared, please. I just a question, that's discretionary inflation, I mean, if the board chose, chooses not to act on the inflation part, they don't have to handle it.
They don't, they can actually decide each year to give that back to taxpayers if it's in the, the, the original proposal for the vote. You can, you can do that with any of those levies, you can change that and give it back to the taxpayers.
How will this be stated on the ballot?
How will it?
Yeah.
Um, I don't have it verbatim yet, we have to go through the attorneys to get the language on the ballot and then we'll show that to the board at the next meeting or whenever our attorneys get into it.
Then there's tax implications too, right?
For, yeah, yeah, any, anytime you increase a levy, it automatically go, levies for local taxpayers, they automatically have to pick up the difference. So that's why some school districts choose not to put the inflationary factor in.
Again, for the sake of simplicity and understanding by the voters, I make a motion. Well, I guess we don't need a motion not to have it on there, nobody makes the motions.
Right, yeah, I think that's right.
I'm not making the motion.
But we know James has not made a motion.
But the reality is, eight years from now, we could be looking at fifteen percent less money coming in, real money coming in.
The inflation would only be on the six hundred, right? This is not inflation on, if those are on the general funds out.
No, just on this, the two point eight million.
Which, which ultimately was down, making fifteen percent cuts.
I, I wouldn't say from the district, no. Because this, this will only be a small fraction of our funding, so this not.
Yeah, not from the total budget, I suppose you could say, okay.
So it's not fifteen percent from the entire district.
It would be fifteen percent less money.
Is there an upper limit?
For the inflationary factor.
Inflation goes.
It's just based on CPI is all that they've based it on, and, and that's the only index measure that they've used in the past, so. Uh, somebody made that, some schools must have complained and they talked about putting it in statute. Now it's in statute that you have to go to the voters either to say you can have an inflationary factor or not, so. That's the nice thing about you guys, you get to choose whether or not you put it in there.
I'll just express that I agree with James at this time for the sake of simplicity. While it certainly would be nice to have, I don't want to confuse the issue as we bring it to the voters.
And the numbers we put in does not include the inflationary factor. The projections that you've all seen does not have it.
According to this, it says they're in there.
The.
Inflation to the school costs.
That's on the expense side.
That's on the expense side, not on the levy.
The, the only thing that we did on the, the other piece that we took off, that you need to know too about the levy, is that when you pass a levy, our equity aid goes down a little bit. So you're losing equity aid at the same time you're gaining some aid with that levy dollar amount. Not that that has anything to do with it, but I want to be as transparent as possible. You are losing some aid as a result of going to the voters for a levy.
So that pie chart that Colleen gives to us.
Those are correct, yep.
So the state will be less?
State aid will be less, although then you go back into the levy, and this is where it gets more confusing, and I don't know how deep you want to go into it. By, by passing a levy, you actually access about two hundred thousand dollars of state aid too. So I guess the net increase of losing, you lose a hundred and twenty thousand of equity aid, you gain about two hundred thousand dollars of state aid. So your net gain by passing a levy. So your net gain by passing a levy is about eighty thousand dollars, so.
State aid.
Yep, and total state aid, but you do lose equity aid as a result. There's an equity formula, the more levy you pass locally, the more, the less state aid you get in equity revenue. Sorry, Jerry, Jerry knows all about this, it gets.
I was just gonna say, that's so nice. Give it, take it away.
Yep.
All right, I am not hearing a motion, but is there a motion for the voters?
I'll make a comment, I believe, for, uh, clarity's, transparencies, and simplicity's sake, that, uh, not including an inflationary, uh, clause in this proposal makes sense.
All right, hearing no further comments, I believe we can move on to the next item of the vote.
Okay, and so the next step for me then will be to talk to our attorneys to set up the ballot question, what it looks like.
Do you have to be a vote on?
Uh, no, we're not, we're just not gonna include it in there, there's no motion.
It's not included, so there's no motion.
Oh, no, okay.
So we're not gonna include it in there. So we'll come up with the ballot question so you can see what the, the ballot looks like in the language, so you know exactly what's gonna be on the ballot, okay? So I have enough information from you.
Mr. Chair, can, can I ask for just a summary of what we have passed?
Uh, yes, that's a good idea, thank you. Please correct me if I am wrong, uh, the board has taken three actions tonight related to a levy. The first was to, uh, decide to go forward with a levy. The second motion, uh, was to go ahead with a levy in the amount of six hundred dollars. And the, the third question was that that, uh, levy would have a term of, of eight years and would not be a part of a, a revoke and replace. So the three eighty-five will come off, uh, as, as originally planned when it was passed. Okay, um, going back in the agenda, we are now on to item number five, the consent agenda.
Some vote.
I understand a motion to approve, we have a vote in a second. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, Ms. Cook, if you please do a, uh, roll call.
James Wolf?
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jason Ingram?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, Mr. Chairman, it passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Uh, curriculum committee has no report this evening. Uh, Tom, did you wanna add anything to that at this time?
Only that I am still working on some, um, materials to present to the other board members regarding, uh, how we as a board, uh, what our expectations and guidelines we may wanna give to the curriculum committee for its operation during the next school year. I have some materials I'll be sending to you, Jason, and to Mr. Sescor, and, and we can.
Thank you. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, number seven, the policy committee. Uh, the minutes are in your packets. Item B is our first action item, consider the adoption of the following policy for second reading, policy eight oh seven, health and safety. Comments from the policy committee on this item?
We, we reviewed the, the various policies, and they're just, the health and safety policy is mainly the, I don't know, going back. It used to be the old attachment ninety-nine form that we had to approve in order us to be eligible for health and safety, uh, revenue. And we've gone through it, and the policy committee's approved, it's boilerplate basically.
Mr. Chair, uh, where are we on the policy updating? We've been doing it for quite a few years, I mean, where are we?
Um, I can defer that to the policy committee, but I, I would, you know, my experience is that it's a cycle and not a finished product.
Okay.
Correct.
There are many policies that need to be looked at every year too.
'Cause MSBA comes with something, okay.
Well, laws change, you know, every time the judge meets laws can change, and our policies were required to review regardless of, of legal changes every, every year.
Most of the policies you're looking at have not been new policies, they've, they've just been revisions and updates.
I, I would say, uh, um, most of the quite old policies, uh, have been rescinded and replaced, uh, so, uh, I don't think. As soon as I said that, Kathy made this motion, she shouldn't jump on the camera.
What's the oldest one we've seen so far?
I'm gonna stop commenting.
Uh, seventy-two, or seventy-four?
Seventy, seventy, yeah, yep, seventy.
I agree with Mr. Olson, but sometime we get to a point where we've caught up, so it's just reviewing periodically.
That, yeah, exactly. Because the policies are the ones that, you know, seventy-two, fifty-eight, you know, turn of the century kind of policies, you know, do we, you know, are we past that? Are we up to basically law changes or MSBA, you know, are we to that point yet?
We're really close.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
The, the annual policies, the mandated policies, we're up to date on all of those, right?
Yep.
And these, these that are coming through may have just, uh, changes as far as legal reference and that type of thing, or a few words have changed, nothing major.
So the old policies are dead?
Well, there's still a lot of.
There's, there's still.
There's still a lot out there.
Oh.
But we add, we try to, we have to do the mandated ones at the meetings, and we add to the old ones when we can.
I think too, just, this, this school district and other school districts have chose to examine all the policies thoroughly before adopting them and rescinding them. Some school districts will just take the whole policy manual of MSBA and adopt it in one shot. So depending on the district you're in, depends on how you, your approval process goes.
All right, uh, in front of us, we have policy eight oh seven, health and safety, any questions on this policy? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Some vote.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve policy eight oh seven, health and save, safety. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Uh, we also have a number of, uh, policies, uh, in front of us for first reading tonight. These will come back to us presumably in a month or so, uh, for second reading. Anything the policy committee would like to share with us on these policies? Okay, so please go, uh, uh, please review these policies, should you have any questions on them, uh, directly, yeah, please, James.
Uh, if students are determined to be or perceived to be in non-compliance with the dress policy or appearance policy, are they asked not to do it again, sent home, whatever you do.
Yep, it's, um, the, sometimes they'll have to put another shirt over the top of it if it's inappropriate, they'll have an extra T-shirt. Um, depending on if it's male or female, we'll address it with the appropriate staff. It, it varies depending on the vulgarity or the different type of apparel that they're wearing. And I, I would say if you're seeing something that you, you, if you're walking through the school and you see something that you don't believe we're following through with that, then call me and then I can take a look at it.
Have a way of eliminating this policy, let's have, uh, uniforms.
I just, I, didn't I just say that last week? Who'd I say that to? I mentioned that same, exactly, Jerry, we think alike, it's good, yeah.
Jerry said it for the whole time he's been on the board, so.
This is not the first time Jerry has made such a.
Is Jerry making a motion, though? Jerry, the change in the policy, uh, five oh four.
I think that's an outstanding idea, but the reality of it, it's gonna be pretty difficult to do.
What color?
Yeah, exactly.
Or green. What color? What color would we choose? Silly question, all right. Any other comments or questions about any of these policies that are in this?
Was this just a wording change, uh, from the state?
Yeah, all these were just minor changes from the state law references.
Who's the enforcer of this, teachers, principal?
Principals, of each of the buildings, yeah.
Teachers can, can, can talk to principals about people, and then the principals take.
Teachers.
Yep.
So the teacher can say, put on a shirt?
No, 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 the teacher calls the principal, and the principal addresses the issue.
Well, why are we so quickly dismissing the idea of a dress, of a dress, what do you call it, a dress code?
I don't know.
No, it's school uniform.
Uniforms.
Uniform, yeah, why are we so quickly dismissing the?
I'm not.
No, but we are as a group. Can't we ask that a study committee be appointed to look at it during the fall term? And come up with a recommendation for the board? I mean, I've seen two, uh, profiles of schools that are doing tremendous jobs, and I'm pretty sure both of them have students in, uh, in a uniform.
Public or private?
Huh?
Public or private?